At this time, we have our roll call, please.
Commissioner Bestia Bill Shepherd.
President.
Commissioner Isaac Owens. Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Royce Every Senior. Chairman Joshua Derrisaw.
I'll have the president let the record reflect, um, Vice Chair Reeves is not present this morning. Commissioner Shepherd Award One is by phone, um, this morning. Um, the state law should do that at least twice a, I believe, twice a year. So, that's the protocol and everything, alright? Do we have a motion to approve that today's agenda November nineteenth? Or a motion to amend?
A motion to amend the agenda. Um, Mr. Chairman, in reference to, um, to add a presentation to be, um, made to Mr. Sammy Mumfree in recognition of his service to the community as he will be, um, stepping into his role that he has played for a long time in our community.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we make an amendment to today's agenda to, um, put on the presentation for Mr. Sammy Mumfree and his honorable dedication to the city. Um, we'll do that presentation, um, actually first. Um, that'll be our first presentation, um, alright? It's been properly moved in second, any further discussion? I said, uh, we shall, um, all in favor of that, let it be known as, um, um, vote, voice for I.
Uh, I.
I.
Alright, I heard three votes, motion carries, alright? Do we have, um, approval of regular meeting meetings, November the fifth?
Certainly.
Sure.
It's been properly moved in second that we approve regular meeting meetings on November fifth, um, two thousand twenty-four, alright? Any discussion on the minutes? Saying now, we shall proceed to vote, um, all in favor, let it be known by voice for I.
I.
I think that was I, alright, so three I's, have it, motion carries. Do we have any speaker appearances? Alright, do we have any, um, anybody signing up on a specific agenda items? Okay, alright, at this time, we shall proceed with our agenda, the first presentation will be Mr. Sammy Mumfree for his services to the city all these years. Um, yes, our Commissioner Owens will read our presentation, what we have prepared for him. And Mr. Mumfree, if you're comfortable, um, up, and in your family, if y'all are comfortable with, that would be fine.
Proclamation, City of Cordial honors Mr. Sammy L. Mumfree. Whereas the City of Cordial would like to celebrate and recognize the contribution of Mr. Sammy Mumfree. And whereas Mr. Sammy Mumfree has volunteered his time to serve on various boards with the City of Cordial, Georgia. And whereas Mr. Sammy Mumfree served on the Gas Code Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Cordial Planning Commission, and Plating Authority, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And whereas Mr. Sammy Mumfree served as chairman of the Cordial Planning Commission and Plating Authority, and Board of Zoning Appeals. And whereas Mr. Sammy Mumfree resigned from both boards this year, whereas the City of Cordial extends a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Sammy Mumfree for his many years of dedicated and loyal service to the city. Now therefore, the City of Cordial Commission honors and proclaims Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, as Sammy Mumfree Day here in the City of Cordial. And further added, that's not listed on here, Mr. Mumfree, is not only your dedication to the city and the work that you've done, but to each of the employees that you've taken that time to share with them along the way. We know that oftentimes, it seems as though it's on unnoticed, but your appreciation and your dedication and the time and effort that you put in, not just to work with the, uh, city, but also to be there as a vital part of making sure that citizens that come, that might not have a full understanding of everything that takes place when they come to these meetings, that you take that time and effort to share with them and to give them the understanding that many of them come maybe not knowing, but lead and like because you've taken that time to share with them. This comes from the City of Cordial Commission, our Chairman Joshua Derrisaw, Vice Chairman Royce Every Senior, Ward Two, Commissioner Bestia Bill Shepherd, Ward One, Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey, Ward Four, and Commissioner Isaac Owens, Ward Three. We thank you so much for your time and dedication to the City of Cordial, thank you so much.
At this minute, I just want to thank the City Commissioner, City Manager, cousin Dennis Mumfree, putting up with him, and I really enjoy serving on this board. And I'm gonna miss y'all, but Lord knows what's there, thank y'all. And I forgot, my wife. Two daughters, green lawn and a red lawn.
And Mr. Mumfree, tell my family, thank y'all so much for your service. You, uh, served on that board and it's been a long time and we appreciate it. And also thanks to the family for your dedication and service and the life and the serve. It ain't easy serving on boards, um, hardly anywhere. But, um, thank y'all for letting us take some of his time away from you all to do this service for us. Uh, we appreciate it so much, yes sir. And I'm glad we're here to honor today while everyone is in their good health and memory. We should definitely give people their honors while they can remember them. Alright, so thank you to Mr. Mumfree and the Mumfree family. Next is, um, presentation of Mr. Ian Mitchell Edge and his family, um, um. I love today because as we have someone who served so long in our community and we're honoring him for his celebration, we have a rising star also. A young man who has brought national attention to our city and our school system as well. So, it's just really blessed to be in between this morning. Um, so, uh, with that, we'll have Mr. Ian Mitchell Edge and his family that come up. Um, we have a residential reader of all proclamations, um, and that's Commissioner Owens and Shepherd, but Commissioner Shepherd is by phone, they just have a better voice than the rest of us, so, you know, you gotta use your talents wisely, so, uh, he also, he was reading this presentation, but Mr. uh, Ian, um, Mitchell went to the two thousand twenty-four National FFA Competition and he won it. Out of all, out of everybody, what I love, what I heard was a story of perseverance because he did it before and he almost not done it, but the family encouraged him to do it again. And when he did it again, he won and prevailed this time. So, it's not only a success, but it's a story of perseverance as well. So, thank you, sir, and thank you for shining a light on this community, alright, uh, Commissioner Owens?
Proclamation, City of Cordial honors Ian Mitchell Edge. Whereas Ian Mitchell Edge is sixteen years old and a member of the Local Future Farmers of America, he is a young man of exceptional talent. And whereas Ian competed in a national singing competition in Indianapolis, Indiana, over two hundred applicants competed in the same competition. And whereas Ian won the two thousand twenty-four National FFA Talent Competition. He is someone who will have a great mark on society as he continues to follow his passion for music. And whereas Ian competed last year for the same FFA National Competition, but did not succeed. And whereas Ian used this undesirable experience as a stepping stone and turned it into a positive experience, he continued to persevere and won the competition this year. Whereas Ian is supported by his father, Lori Edge, who is a singer, and also his advisor, Eric Dixon. And whereas Ian gives and says, God gave him this gift of singing and he will continue to pursue it wholeheartedly. And whereas Ian writes and produces his own music and shares it online for the entire world to listen. And whereas Ian listens to a lot of contemporary music and old school music from different artists such as Donny Hathaway, George Harrison, and one of my favorites, Dionne Warr. Now therefore, the City of Cordial Commission honors and proclaims Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Ian Mitchell Edge Day. Done by the City of Cordial Chairman Joshua Derrisaw, Vice Chairman Royce Every Senior, Ward Two, Commissioner Bestia Bill Shepherd, Ward One, Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey, Ward Four, and Commissioner Isaac Isaac Owens, Ward Three. Congratulations.
You got the voice.
That's why I'm here, okay. Um, first of all, uh, good morning, everybody, hello, sir. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, like, um, uh, he mentioned, it, it really was a story of perseverance, it really was, uh, getting off the stage last year in October and not wanting to come back and talking to my dad, like, I'm not doing this again next year, him saying, you doing this again? Uh, and I believe this year, there was, there was, there was a different, uh, energy that I brought to the stage. There was a different attitude, it was not, I lost last year, let me just do whatever. It was, I lost last year, I learned last year what not to do, let me improve on that this year. And that's exactly what I did, so, thank you once again, everyone here, and this is truly an honor, thank you.
Can you all have anything to say?
First of all, give it up to God. Um, and, uh, to the, uh, City Commission, all of the commissioners, uh, those who are present and those who are absent on this morning, we appreciate this honor, this is an honor. We realize that, uh, these type of awards and accolades are not just passed out to everybody. Uh, and so, we wanna thank you all for honoring our son. He, um, he, he put in the work, uh, but like, he, he wanted to give up, he wanted to throw in the towel. Uh, and, uh, I looked at him in the rearview mirror in the van and I said, yeah, that's not happening. Uh, and I'm so proud of him, uh, I got a few tears this morning, uh, because, uh, he could be on the corner, he could be here, he could be there, but he has chosen, he made a, uh, uh, and some would say encouraged, uh, to persevere, uh, and to pursue his talents and his gifts. And so, again, to, uh, uh, Commissioner Derrisaw and to all of you all who have honored him and to the City of Cordial for wrapping your arms around him and sending congratulations, uh, and, uh, so we wanna thank you all. Okay.
Um, so my family and I, we lived, um, in Sumter County. We lived in Chatham County, Spalding County, Henry County, and we came to Chris County in two thousand twenty-one. And this county has been the most loving for us, um, the most accepting, starting with the school system. My kids have been homeschooled and all those school systems. And this was the first time that they felt like they had a connection with the, the teachers, administration, and the city. Um, my husband and I are business owners here, and this has been the place that has felt really a lot like home. So, I thank you all for that, because together, you provided that for us.
Alright, thank y'all so much again, yes sir.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations, Mr. Edge, and I thank his family for pushing him. We also have another young superstar, I mean, I think we'd be, we miss him, he recognized, one of the finest shows he and I ever met. It's Mr. Corey Watts. Corey was about thirty-four from our state, Eagle Scout in Chris County. And it's, it's certainly due to the, uh, to the family support he received from his grandfather, his grandmother, and his mother, and his mother is a math teacher, so it's a privilege to prove when you're also acknowledged, Corey.
And then we presented, yeah, we presented.
We certainly did, I did not want to get him lost in the show.
I think he would see that day we presented. Okay. Um, City Managers, if you wanna share a light on that, um, how we did honor him.
We did present a proclamation. And Community Club, I just recently had an event and they, uh, requested the proclamation be presented there and. Okay, presented, yes.
Yeah, well, um, thank you, sir, and, uh, encouraged by, um, your service as well. And are you a freshman at Fort Belk? Okay, well, you declared a major? Okay, okay, that's nice, yeah. Oh, nice, nice, I may need to come and check out one of those games. Yeah, for sure, well, we're proud of you, thank you, if you need anything from the city, encourage me and, um, Carolina, just I know finals will be here sooner, um, you know, I, um, sooner rather than later. After you get through that Thanksgiving break, it's finals time, as you will learn, I'm gonna have you so long. Yeah, if you need anything, seriously, reach out and you can do whatever, just believe in yourself. Don't listen to the naysayers because you'll have a lot, but it's gonna take hard work and determination, but you can do it. Alright, yes sir, so, thank you, alright, sir. Alright, I see Ms. Bauer coming up and, um, we'll have her presentation with Bridging the Gap Educational Services. Um, a little context to it, Ms. Bauer has the, um, building on two twelve over there by the bus station or the Owen Uniform Factory, as we call it, um, and she's been serving our youth and families out of that building for, um, a little bit less than a year. So, I'll let you introduce yourself to the mayor, we'll be taking you there, so if you can, let us know who you are and your, um, work that you're doing with your nonprofit.
Will do, will do, thank you, Commissioner Derrisaw. Greetings, everyone, as Commissioner Derrisaw stated, I am Julia Byron. Um, I am the founder of Bridging the Gap Educational Services located at two twelve North Second Street. Since the inception of Bridging the Gap Educational Services, we originated, um, over the summer. It was a little impromptu, but we made it happen. Um, since the inception, we started a summer program, it was the first at the center, to my understanding, that, um, was offered to the students here in Cordial. Um, we served over a little over fifty students. We started out with about seventy-five students, but as it trickled down, um, you know, about fifty students, and trust me, it was, it was a great experience, it was a first experience, but it was also great. Um, during that time, the students had the opportunity to, um, to participate in different educational activities that we had for the students weekly, in addition to lunch and snack we serve for the students. Where we are now, now we're, um, offering an after-school program. The after-school program is Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday from two thirty to seven P M. At this time, due to daylight saving time, we close at six thirty P M, it's supposed to be six P M, but you know, sometimes there are some parents who doesn't get off until six, so, we're there until six thirty. Um, on Fridays, we close at five P M. Starting January two thousand twenty-five, we will start closing at six P M, because it's a little bit dark over there, it's very, it's very dark. So, starting January two thousand twenty-five, we'll be closed at six P M, Monday through Thursday, our normal time, on Fridays at five P M. After-school, um, activities, we assist students with homework assistance, our scholars. We also participate in educational outreach, as I mentioned, we have STEM, we participate in STEAM activities, which is the, um, engineering arts, math, technology, and the science with the students. Also, social literacy, um, sessions and money management session. Moving forward, there will be a grand opening, it is December the seventh, at the center, two twelve North. T-Mobile will be, will be there providing free food, also, you'll get the opportunity to, at the center, um, we'll have a little small ceremony, nothing extravagant, just something like this here, where I, uh, get up and introduce, um, about the center, tell everyone about the center. Um, also, December the eleventh, we'll be participating in a college tour. So, we'll be taking the juniors, well, some of the juniors and some of the twelfth graders to Georgia Southwestern as well as Columbus State University, and they will be going on a charter bus. So, you see that, December the eleventh, um, was it a junior here, so a junior, senior? Yes, so Ms. Renee Allen, Ms. Patterson, she'll be sharing that information with you guys, okay? Yes, and also, um, moving on, current and new initiative for two thousand twenty-five. So, the BGS Movement is for kindergarten through eighth graders. And that's where we give like, um, sessions to kindergarten through eighth graders where they have the opportunity to learn about themselves and write about themselves based on who am I, I am. The students will have the opportunity to write a speech and they will have to present the speech and the opportunity to win a scholarship. Whoever the winner is, and sometimes we have winners, because we have done this one in the past. Uh, we have winners, the students, uh, will be offered that scholarship, it will go into Regions Bank, and then they will have the opportunity to put extra money, other parents to put money into that scholarship fund. And so, when they graduate, they'll get to utilize that scholarship towards college, uh, wherever it is they decide to do after high school. As a matter of fact, over the summer, when the summer program had started, I had a student who came in and, uh, she was like, Ms. Julia, how do I retrieve my money from my scholarship fund? And I was just like, ah, you got so old, oh my God, not in that way, not in that way, but I was just so, I was so elated because she came in about a scholarship fund, so she could use that to a Southwestern. So, she's one of our, um, scholars who's attended Georgia Southwestern, Georgia Southwestern. And last but not least, the Multidisciplinary Other Arts Initiative. I know, um, we will be expanding that, we're offering that now at the center to the students who attend the after-school program. But moving forward, January two thousand twenty-five, we will be offering that services, um, on Thursday evenings and some Saturdays as needed. So, we'll be, um, offering this service to fourth graders to twelfth graders. So, fourth graders to eighth graders, they will meet on a Thursday from five to six, and our ninth through twelfth graders will meet from six to seven P M. Now, I know many of you might be wondering, what is that? So, the Multidisciplinary Other Arts is a diverse portfolio where the students will not only learn abstract art, because that's what they're learning now, um, abstract art, but they'll also learn digital art as well as the opportunity to learn how to operate different camera lenses. Uh, the opportunity to learn how to, uh, incorporate those different lenses of art to create and produce short films as well as a movie. Uh, BGS has had the opportunity to receive a donation or a grant from the Georgia, from the Viber Community Grants for the Georgia Council for the Arts, make sure I get it right, uh, from the Department of Economic Development, to help us with this project. So, we will start this initiative January two thousand twenty-fifth. Also, um, I have been in conversations and communication because it's not with just me, but with Mr. Hill for the City of Cordial, Mrs. Smart, uh, for the City of Cordial, and as well as Mr. Chris, who works at CBS Studios. And that's all I have for you guys today, um, any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Mr. uh, Mrs. Bauer?
Not a question, but I, um, I am glad to hear, um, and I've heard feedback from some of the families that you've had a chance to serve, um, one of the things that, I don't know, and you might have said it, I might have missed it, but I'm also, uh, appreciative of the involvement that you're trying to do with the whole family. Uh, I don't know if you, if they heard, said it, but, uh, you know, because a lot of times, reaching the child is good, but if they don't have the parent to bring them or have the parent, as we've heard today, to encourage them, they don't, they don't, they will easily quit. And one of the things that, um, a parent shares is that they were grateful that you involved them, um, in that because when the child, this particularly, since the child decided, they would not only say to do the work and would not tell me, probably that they did do the work, and, but because of your communication with the parent, parent was made aware, so that gave the reinforcement, so I agree with you. I think that that's good that they hear that, it's a help to parents because some of our parents need that extra push as well, so.
And I agree, and that's like I tell them, I'm a parent as well, so from a parent perspective, I do share that with my parents. Um, the students, they are first, the students come first, I wanna make sure that they are doing their best, uh, whatever it is, that I can support, whatever it is I can do in my power, I am there.
And how many people are on your, on your team?
On my team right now, we have a total of four, make sure I get it right. Yes, it's four, so we have a federal works that is student, I heard someone say Fort Valley State. So, we do have federal works that is students, so, um, after this meeting, I'll reach out to you because I'm not sure if there's something you would like to partake in, and we have a work-based learner student. And then we have a contract person, so it's a total of four of us, yes.
Any more questions for Ms. Bauer? Ms. Bauer, how long have you been providing service to this community?
Since two thousand and sixteen, and that's where I mentioned the BGS Movement. We started with the BGS Movement with the kids, kindergarten through eighth graders, offering them scholarships, giving them the opportunity to shine bright, so, since two thousand sixteen.
Okay, yeah, well, so it's pretty, um, pretty good, and I've, I've been to a few of your, um, sessions that, um, remind us very powerful, um, to hear them kids read and win that, um, if, again, if you need anything, uh, from the city. I, I just left a conference in Tampa, and one thing that one of the cities, um, there did, they opened up bank accounts for them as well, and they made the finance, um, director of charge, or depending on the city structure, um, the, um, pressing of account, not the parent, where the parent can pull money out, but they contribute money. Um, I would say for me, if you need matched donations of any of that, um, I can speak for the rest of them, but please reach out, so we can make that money go further, because we understand tuition is increasing.
It has.
We don't know what, um, what's gonna be done to the Pell Grant, that helps a lot of low-income kids, um, um. We don't even know what, uh, what happened with other scholarships, the Hope Scholarships. So, if you need any, um, other assistance or any support, uh, financially and other in kind, please reach out to me, um, and I do, and I, I have a network of people, um, that, that probably get tired of me because they also contribute to my campaign when I run, but, uh, uh, but I have a network of people, so if you need, um, any, uh, help in that, please let me know.
Thank you, will do, alright, awesome.
And Mr. Chairman, you, you made a valid point here with some of our local businesses as well, who, uh, who want to support, that'd be a good way for them to do it, to reach out, you know, some of our businesses that have come, some of our new businesses come, because when we talk to new people who are coming, that's one of the things they wanna know with the ability to help the community, and that's gonna be their work, their labor force, so, if they can help increase that, that might be another way of reaching out to some of them, um, that are awarded contracts and different things as well, to see if they would like to make contributions, um, to become a part of the chairman's network.
Okay, awesome, will do, will do.
Ms. Bauer, I'm sorry, um, did you receive the information regarding QuikTrip?
I did, yes, so, um, they did donate a small amount, um, we just received a pickles last week, had to be last week, yes, yes, they did, yes.
I know QuikTrip, when they first opened, they, uh, sent the city a flyer that we consent to, no office, just making them aware of their gift, their, uh, the funds that they have to give back to the community.
Right, yes, okay, awesome, thank you.
Before, um, I start, uh, this meeting, um, I want to, um, um, City Manager, you, um, I see your report is moved up, is that right, is that intentional? Okay, before I start this meeting, I wanna discuss something, um. Last meeting, there was only three commissioners, well. last meeting, there was only three commissioners, well, chairman and two commissioners. Commissioner Owens had to leave and Commissioner Shepherd had to leave. And I wrote it down, a contract when it came to me. Because I didn't believe that, um, the current, the business who put in that bid had the experience, expertise to do the work or what have you. Um, and I have other information, um, on what's going on with that company and at least one of the commissioners here. Um, and it's not, in my opinion, legal. However, that was a call meeting. And that, the call meeting, um, in my opinion, and by some legal people I spoke with, um, there are sessions in our charter that speaks to how a meeting is called. Now, the law says that you can call a meeting, the state law I'm referring to. And it's, it's more vague than what our charter speaks to. Our charter says that you have to call by phone or you have to, um, do it on person or in person. It says personally. I will send the email. And that doesn't suffice or satisfy what our charter speaks to. And I don't wanna sound as, as a conspiracy. But to me, it was an act of collusion for the commissioners to have a meeting and not properly inform the chairman. Furthermore, the matter that was on the call meeting was no emergency. We're right back here today having a meeting in two weeks. So, that matter could have been brought before the commission at this very meeting and prove that contract or what have you. But that speaks to the whole point of the urgency that was done by. Now, in this contract, the first received the contract from the city, it is known by fact now that they didn't have the equipment because later, and that's how they, so I'll speak verifiably. I'll pull it up. The contractor received a, the contract on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. The contractor didn't have the funds, didn't have the equipment, didn't have anything. So, they had to go to the economic revolving loan and receive a loan in an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars on July twenty-eighth. As you all know, that the city has to have the lowest responsible bidder, meaning they can do the work. Now, I asked our public servant, our Public Works Director, point blank at our last meeting, whether they did the job, could they do the job classified? And he didn't necessarily say, he said in his words, they've never done work like this before. That's what Steve said. That they, am I wrong, Steve? You, you, you relayed that they have never done this work before. The city is not a person who gets shade tree person to do work. The city has too much funds for that. And when I looked at the call meeting, the way it was described is the problem gonna come back. And the person can describe any method or methodology in which they can help us understand that the work can be done in a way where we wouldn't have to come back and do the work. I'm ashamed of this commission. And the continual disrespect of the chairman does a literature. If you don't like me, put somebody up if I run again. But you keep disrespecting me in this position, which the people put me, is a shame. And you do it. You do it so secretly and outside the public. But what you're all to set yourself up to is to be lined up in the court with every person y'all keep following their lead on. Cause that person have shown that they have no respect for law and order. And y'all keep following the lead of this very person. I sent the email saying that this meeting was not properly called, having I got a reply. I spoke with our city attorney on the matter. He told me what he believed. I need an attorney to get back with me and tell me what the law is, not what he believe. I get free legal service from another attorney in this state, who serves counties and school boards and cities. I told a lot of these commissioners, been up here longer than me, the charter, instead of respecting the charter, what they did, they took away the powers of the chair. And if it's my attitude, if it's my presentation, if it's any of that, I, I'm very reflective, I'm a counselor by, by, by educational experience. I have to sit with myself, I look in the mirror a lot before I go in a session with kids. Because I have to look at my bias and look at where I am. And I do that here. The thing of the matter is this. We rushed to approve a contract that should have never been given, like the first contract to this person. And I'm saying this, cause I want it on record. Because the actions I'm about to take gonna line a lot of you all up for a simple way it is. Violation of conflict of interest. Commissioner Shepherd goes to church with it, take pictures on Facebook often with him, endorse him at his corner. He's Commissioner Reeves' personal close friends. And I heard Commissioner Reeves himself tell me the nature of their relationship and where that money's going. I fought the way, the, um, DA and, and the GBI. They dragging their feet on it. Because everybody in this county and town is playing politics and don't wanna do what they're responsible, even the court system over there. And in this city, more legal, legal liability than anything else. I even asked this commissioner, Mr. Best, asked a question a couple meetings ago, when Commissioner Reeves was locked up. Well, what we gonna do there after chairman can't be there, we can't have a meeting? I asked this commissioner not to put, make him vice chair because that very same reason. But what did they do? Everybody bow down and made him vice chair again. I tried to do the right thing. It's, you don't get no privileges being vice chair, but calling this meeting, that's it. You don't get no real privilege. That hell, they don't took most of my privileges away. It's chairman. But y'all keep following the lead of a person who showed that they have no respect for law and order. See, they tried to make me like I ain't have no respect for law and order. But I do. I don't have a record. And again, if it's about my presentation, if it's about my attitude, about my demeanor, how I speak to people, this county just voted for a man endorsing Trump who does the same thing. So, it can't be that. They don't expect a black person to speak with authority and show strength and actually live out what their authority gives them. Because that's the only thing that makes sense. If it's my character, it's my delivery, why it's not his? So, with that, what y'all can do is call another meeting because this courtroom is now, cause I would not be staying. Uh, sir, could you escort everybody out, cause the courtroom is broken?